Good evening and welcome to our regular September 26, 2018 meeting. I'll begin by calling the meeting, weekly meeting to order. We're right to item two, which is a review and approval of minutes. I'm looking for approval of the board's select on September 12, 18 minutes as written. But did you just make some changes?
I just had one change that I asked. It's just a technical change that I asked Melinda and Jen to make.
Do you want to hold off and not do that? Do you want to amend it? Do you want to include your amendment?
I don't have a copy because I can't read it right now. But maybe if we could just read it to what the others are, if everyone's agreeable, we could vote it down.
I'm fine with that.
Sorry, Melinda.
No worries.
I should read the whole section then so people can hear the change or just tell them the change?
Or maybe just the number based on what section it's in and then the change itself.
Okay. So on number seven. On the seventh line down, instead of saying "The Board deferred further deliberation and voting on the matter until it could meet jointly with the MPIC," period. The line would read "The Board deferred further deliberation and voting on the matter because this item was not included in the original agenda," period.
I think that's the reason we didn't have the discussion. And we scheduled the meeting, the joint meeting later.
Okay.
It's just a technical.
Is that it? Just that? Is that the only change?
That's...
That the only change, Katie?
Yes.
Just that one change? Okay. So as amended by Ms. Conlon, could, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of September 12, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Just item three, I want to quickly confirm future meeting dates. We're scheduled to meet again on October 10, 2018, and October 24, 2018. Then we will be holding special town meetings October 20, tentatively, October 22, 23, and 25. And are we potentially looking at a joint meeting with the, there could be a joint meeting with the planning boards sometime in October. I just have not heard officially yet from the chair, but it is a possibility, so.
Weren't we looking at one point at one tomorrow night with the planning board? Is that still on?
I know they have a meeting, but I don't think it's a joint meeting.
We don't seem to have a posting.
No, and I don't think the chair had not mentioned to me the fact of having this as a joint meeting, so. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Go ahead.
October 24 is the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Yep.
But we will probably be in the middle of town meeting, at least the first two nights, I would assume.
So how about if we do this? I take it we're going to meet on the 22nd. Let's say town meeting goes two nights. We're going to meet on the 22nd and the 23rd. You think we want to take the 24th off and maybe try and get as much as, do a heavy, how about if we do this? Let's do a heavier agenda on the 10th and try and spread the 24th over those two dates. There isn't really a lot for us in the town meeting meetings, but we're going to meet on both of them before.
Right. And potentially, if it, there are some zoning articles. If it goes three nights.
Right.
Then you'd be meeting for four.
I know we would. So let's hold off on the 24th, go the 10th, and let's see what we can cover on the 22nd and 23rd in our meetings before town meeting. Is that all right? Okay. Okay. Citizens, do we have anyone here tonight for citizen speak? I do want to, for those watching at home, there were two young men. You can see in the camera, I believe, when the camera goes to two young residents of the town, they're doing their community service for something they did wrong. No, that's not the truth. They're actually AP students at Catholic Memorial High School. They're seniors, and this is a project in their politics and government class. Am I correct? Something like that? And they're here to learn about the government of their community. And their names, Brendan Ryan and John Costello. And I told them they have to stay until the final minute that we leave. But we want to welcome them and hope they enjoy their night with us tonight. They got kind of an uneventful night, so that'll be good. Okay. Item five, I'm going to invite Joe Chamberlain for discussion and approval on the Municipal Broadband Committee request for proposals. Joe, you come up and join us and...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, while Joe sets up, I just want to thank this group for the unbelievable work. This board put that committee together not even eight months ago. And the work that they've been able to accomplish to this point is, it's impressive. So thank you, Joe. Thank you to fellow committee members.
On behalf of the committee, thank you for that acknowledgement.
Thank you again. Two nights in a row, two nights in a row now? Were you, did I see?
Yeah. Monday night.
Monday night. Welcome to the world of town government.
Exciting stuff.
The floor is yours.
So thank you for the invite. So I'm here to convey to the board that we, the committee, actually a subcommittee of the broadband committee, approved, reviewed the RFPs that we got back from consulting firms to do the study for our broadband feasibility. We got, we sent out, I'm sorry, we received three responses from three qualified firms. The first response declined to, to put in a bid. They thought it was too short of a timeframe. They loved the project, but they just didn't think that they had the resources to do the timeframe and the, and the time that we wanted it done. So we actually ended up reviewing two proposals, one from Magellan Advisors and the other one from CTC Technologies. And the subcommittee, after reviewing with the town procurement officer, Arlene Zuniga, and we also had a guest from Braintree's Electric Light Department, a gentleman by the name of Jack Orpin, who's their broadband manager, who is advising us as well. And we all unanimously chose CTC Technologies as our recommendation to the board. The, in the event, they're both highly qualified firms, but in the event, CTC had a much better proposal in the sense that they literally answered everything that we wanted, they kept it in the scope that we wanted, whereas the other, the other firm did not. The other firm had a much wider scope. They basically offered to do something we didn't ask for, in essence. And CTC answered everything that we wanted them to answer, and in the end, it wasn't too hard of a decision. So that's our recommendation. Our recommendation for the firm to do the, to do our feasibility study is CTC Technologies. And if I could just take just another couple minutes here for the record, I'm going to read to you the scope, because this, the scope of the work. Since I'm sure the board is reading lots of things in the, in the course of their work, and so this is just a slight, just a reminder of the scope of work. So I'm just going to read it right here. It's only a few bullet points. So what CTC is proposing to assist Milton with are the following tasks. They're going to describe and map the state of existing networks in the town. That includes our institutional network and also, to the extent that they can, any other networks that are up in town. And that would basically be, you know Comcast or, or any other incumbents who might have networks running through town. Item two, they're going to gather information from town departments about the current and future needs. So that's basically bringing together internal stakeholders within town government and doing an in-depth assessment of department by department of how these various departments can benefit from a municipal broadband service. The third item that they're going to prepare for us is a high-level design for a new institutional network, fiber optic network, that contemplates future broadband services. So this is, this is essentially a map that they're proposing to build for us or to create for us, to show where the, where the network would actually be strong, geographic footprint. The item four was to assess the town's rights to utility poles, access and attachments, and I'm going to return to that in a second. So I'm going to skip over that now. And the, and the fifth is the big one, which is to prepare a cost estimate for how much this network would cost us. I imagine that they're going to give us a range of costs depending on a number of different factors that might go into the network. And then lastly, and this one's, they're all important, this one's very important. Examine various business model options to support such a network. This is a, potentially a, a new asset for the town that may require expertise that the town doesn't have right now. And so they, they are very well-versed in exactly this type of question and figuring out what would be a good fit for the, for a town like Milton in order to support a system like this. They, I'm going to return, just for a moment, back to municipal rights on the utility poles. And as a reminder to the board, all of the utility poles, I think it's nearly every single utility pole, 3,300 poles in the town are owned by either Eversource or Verizon. So we have to essentially ask, we have to work.
Permission.
With the incumbents. So that's what I mean by access and attachment rights. It's probably the most crucial question in this whole project. How that question is answered is going to determine a lot for us, not the least of which would be cost. Now, CTC and the other vendor did the same thing. They actually deferred a little bit on this question, saying that they, they will offer their opinions on that question, on municipal rights to the poles, but they both deferred and said that the town would be best served by qualified counsel, so basically a legal firm who specializes in municipal rights, municipal rights of way and that sort of thing. And I believe, and I'm not positive because I haven't followed up with our town procurement officer yet, but I believe she's talking to the, to the vendor right now on that one item, of whether they're going to cover that or not. Now, should I, I should talk about Baller &amp; Stokes?
Let me just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, yeah. If I may, let's focus, I think it's important, Joe, to focus on this first and then maybe you talk about Baller &amp; Stokes after, which is a, which is a legal firm.
Right.
And they would help figure out the rights to the pole, rights to the poles. And if I may, just give a very brief context for this. In my judgment, this vendor is important for two reasons. One, the Municipal Broadband Committee was charged with determining whether it was feasible to develop a municipal broadband system. And so this vendor will assist in that. And two, and a subset of that is Comcast, in the course of our negotiations for a new 10-year contract, has suggested that they are not going to support our municipal INET, our INET network, our institutional network. And, and so we are left in the position of figuring out, if they're not going to support that, what are we going to do? And so this study will also help us inform on what we can do with respect to an INET if Comcast is not going to support it, what we need to do, how much it will cost to build our own network. And so, so I think, I think this vendor is important for two reasons. One, the broader question of municipal, municipal network, which, which, you know, is, as I said, the bigger picture. And two, the more pressing matter is what we're going to do about our institutional network in October, perhaps, when Comcast decides that it's not going to do it anymore. So I think the vendor's important for those two reasons. This, our board approved the RFP for this, I think in August, in the amount of $30,000, and we thought we had the money for that at that time. This vendor has come back at $38,000, which is an increase of $8,000. The other vendor came in at $88,000. So, so this seemed to be a good value, and it's a, it's a, it's a well, it's a, it's a credible vendor, certainly. And so, so I think the question, one of the questions is, is do we have that extra $8,000? And then, and then do we want to go forward with this?
So do you want to finish first or do you want to?
I think we should talk about that and then we, I think, yeah. I think the other, I think the other question, the law firm, is a second, separate question. That's a new, new question, really.
Just refresh, where the 30 we voted came from where?
Selectmen's budget.
Can we afford another eight?
I talked to the town accountant today, and she's comfortable that we can.
Can we vote that tonight? Or do we need to vote it tonight? Should we, can we put her on for the 10th?
I think, I think we could approve, we could, we could accept the vendor. We could, we could accept the, the bid from the vendor, and then there'll be a contract that we have to approve at that point. So that may be the next step. Pardon me, but I think the, the action for this board is to accept the bid at that point and then to continue down the road with CTC.
Anyone have any questions before we, on this, before we move forward on this?
Accept the bid at 30,000.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. So we need to find another 8,000.
We don't have to do it tonight, though. We just need to accept the bid right now and then vote the money at a later date. She's just going to accept his recommendation to go with this company and then vote the money at a later date.
And that additional $8,000 would potentially be coming from the budget of the officer in the select.
Yes.
The full 38 would be coming from the?
The full 38, yeah. Full 38.
Well, I suppose my only question is, if they're deferring on that piece and we're going to retain counsel for that, does that change the bid?
I believe, I believe our town procurement officer is working on that very question.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't talked to her in the past day or so.
Okay.
But I do believe she's working on that specifically.
Okay.
I have one question. So I noticed in the correspondence, it said CTC is a local company. Did I see that in there? Was that where they're from?
Yeah.
No, they're not local. They're, they're out of DC.
Okay.
Or Maryland, so.
I have done work. I saw some, there was some, something in that correspondence, it said something about either local work or local...
They've done, they've done a lot of local work. Like they're, in their, in their response to us, they listed out a lot of towns in Massachusetts who they work with.
Right. But it says, it says in this memo from Arlene Zuniga, it does say that due to CTC's location being local, as well as their experience with municipalities and other companies that...
That's why I thought like, are they in Boston? I picked right up on that one.
Yeah, no, I think, I think what she's talking about is their project manager lives in Reading.
Okay.
So he's local.
That's, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Which is, it's a nice, it's a nice advantage to have somebody that close.
So two points, and I don't know if you can answer these now? So I'm just thinking of two local pieces of infrastructure that we have that are on Verizon poles, one being obviously the firearm. And I don't know if we pay anything to Verizon for that. And the second is some of our cameras which have fed through the internet also, and I, in that aspect, I don't think we pay anything to that either. So that might be, they may be very friendly in this. I don't, okay. So do you want to?
Can I qualify one more thing, Mr. Chairman, as well? So the town accountant is also looking into, when we received, we received money back from the cable companies, we can use those to improve infrastructure. We've done it to the Cronin Room, the cameras and stuff like that. We're exploring if this funding source can come from that pool of money that we've collected over the years. As they, both ICN and Comcast pay the town back monthly for fees. A lot of it goes to Milton Access Television, but there is a residual and there are certain requirements that you need to meet in order to spend that money for purposes, and she believes this may qualify for that.
Okay.
Joe, I have one, one question.
Yes.
Can you, I know that you, your recommendation is CTC, of course, but you mentioned, or maybe it was Mike, the disparity between these two bids, 88 and 38. Can you help me understand that? That seems to be a wide gap.
Yeah, we were very surprised by the, by the gap. If, you know, the, my best guess, and this is me speaking, and as a, with my personal opinion, as opposed to an official broadband committee opinion, I think, I think Magellan, I don't think they read our RFP that closely. They, because they, when they were, when we, when I read their response, everyone read their response, everybody had similar reaction in that we didn't think, we kind of think they pulled this, this response off the shelf.
Okay.
Changed some teams.
Okay.
Kind of put it in there. I mean, we had that feel that they didn't really read what we asked for.
Okay.
And they kind of, they threw a lot of stuff in there that was just irrelevant to us and probably based it, based their price on that. I mean, that's, that was my best guess on why that disparity was so great.
Okay. Thank you. Do we want to make the...
So I think, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think process-wise, what we need, what we would need to do in order to keep the process moving is to accept the bid, and then we'd move into a contract phase.
Yes.
Okay. So, so if, if everyone is comfortable, I'll move to accept the bid of, excuse me, CTC for the purpose of reviewing our broadband needs in the amount of $38,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? We good? No, we're good?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you and thank you for all your time.
Okay. Thank you.
And then do you want to just talk about the other things?
There's obviously something I don't know about that you're trying to talk about. So the floor is yours, like.
Okay.
Okay.
So I mentioned, I listed about, I listed six bullet points on what the scope of CTC's work is going to be. And number four was to assess the town's rights to utility poles.
Right.
And they had kind of deferred, they said, "Yeah, we can do that, but you should really get legal counsel to figure that out for you." And we had anticipated that, and so we, I, we had been talking to a few different law firms who specialize in municipal law, especially around rights of way and that sort of thing. So we, we reached out to a firm called Baller &amp; Stokes. They're, they're based in Washington, DC, and this is their specialty. They're telecom lawyers, essentially. And they are nationally renowned, they're well-respected, they're, they're in this, they're well-known in this industry. So we had reached out to them and asked them specifically, you know, to give us a quote. How much, you know, how much would you guys charge us for that particular question? Again, our rights to the poles. And so we got a quote back from them, an engagement letter from them, which is now being...
Reviewed?
Reviewed, thank you. And we also, the subcommittee, when we were reviewing the RFPs, we discussed this firm and then the question in general about the, about the poles, but this firm in particular. And we also unanimously recommended this firm of Baller &amp; Stokes to handle this particular question for us. It was, it was, it was, and I realize it was an unlooked-for task, but things moved very quickly, you know, as we were going through the RFP. And I'll give my apologies now if this is, if I'm surprising people with the Baller &amp; Stokes question. But they get back to us and with their engagement letter and said that, said that they, that they do this. We'd done a lot of research before this, and this is exactly the type of work that they do. And they work with incumbents literally all over the country. They work with municipalities all over the country. They do a lot of other types of work with municipalities and incumbents. So we thought that these, that this firm brings, brings a lot to the table for us.
Go ahead.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, my suggestion on this is, is to kind of tee this up for a discussion and decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
Get the engagement letter, talk to our existing town council to determine how they would fit in, and then we can tee it up for, for a discussion, decision next time.
Do they know about this at all? Is John aware of it?
I don't know. I don't know.
You don't know?
No. So I think we should bring, I think we should bring them in just to see how they...
I agree. I agree. Okay. All right. All right with that?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Item six, I'm going to invite the chair of 350th Committee to Lyndale Lee Sheridan to join us to discuss the distribution of the remaining funds and, am I right? Is it the legacy gift? Am I correct?
Yes. Well, good evening. I'm Lyndale Lee Sheridan, 57 Clifton Road, Milton, and I had the privilege of being the chairperson of the 350th Committee back in who knows what year.
2012.
Good job. So we, believe it or not, that's six years ago. It's hard to believe, but we had a great group of people who worked for a full year or over a year and planned a full year's...
Events.
It was really, it was unbelievable, all the events that were planned for, for the year-long celebration. But we had a big event weekend, which, just to refresh your memory, or maybe those people at home that don't, weren't here at that time, our big event weekend was a parade and fireworks and music, which kind of parlayed into our We Are Milton that we have now every year up in Hutchinson Field. So that's a little background on what we've done, and the committee has still been doing some work since that time. We did a lot of fundraising during that year, not just from selling memorabilia, but also from the events that we sponsored, to try and have money for legacy gifts for the time. So since that time, we have installed, thankfully, in Lower Mills, a beautiful clock that people still comment to me about how much, well, I think that area is just turning around so much now, especially with Henry's coming down. So I think that that's a really nice gift, and we actually have another clock just like it that's been in storage, waiting patiently for the East Milton deck to be, East Milton to be revitalized, and it will be installed there. I'm anxious to see that that's, or excited to see that that's on your agenda tonight. So hopefully, within the next two years, that will be able to come out of storage, get dusted off and installed, too. It will be a beautiful addition to the East Milton area. We also have that beautiful new, thanks to Barbara Martin, 350th rug that welcomes you as you enter into Town Hall. So those are some of the things that you can see or look forward to seeing. But we also have funds that remain targeted, earmarked, and that we hope to spend in the next few months. One of the events that we had during our 350th celebration was a trolley tour, and we visited many sites in town that people really didn't know about and with a lot of historical significance. So we've identified 11 of those sites, and we have earmarked $25,000 to create signs to be placed at these different markers, and I don't have the list with me, I'm sorry. But that would be, that Kathy Fagan and Mary McLaughlin have been really working for several years on this project. Annie Davis has been a great help, and the DPW has also been a great help in this work. So we hope to get that finalized. It's very, very close right now to going out to print, so to say. And we will have a brochure that we will create to go with it, maybe not necessarily a paper copy, but an online copy so that these markers won't just go up and be forgotten about, that, you know, we'll put the word out there around town about the availability and some background information on it. So that's $25,000 that's yet to be spent. We also have some educational historical plantings that are proposed through the work of Beth Neville at Pierce Middle School, and that is totaling $10,000. at Pierce Middle, Middle School, and that is totaling ten thousand dollars. We want to put seed money aside for the 375th celebration, because when we did this, the town gave us some seed money, and we felt like it would be good for us as a committee to be able to set that money aside. So, folks, that's in two thousand thirty-seven, so put it on your agenda for two thousand thirty-four.
I'm writing down that you should be chair.
Two thousand thirty-four, I think that we, we should start that work again. And we have five thousand dollars earmarked for that, for that work. That leaves us approximately nineteen hundred dollars remaining in our funds. And until we know exactly the final cost of these other events, we really aren't in a place to say exactly how we want to spend that. We have some ideas. But that's, that will be determined when we have the final, the final expenses for those already planned events. So, the committee, the original committee was about fifteen folks, and we're down to nine now, who still are hanging in there, and our term is up the end of September. And so, we will need to be, have an extension on our term in order to be able to get these projects completed. But we're excited to bring it to conclusion.
We have all the names, yeah?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, but before you leave, I just want to, for those who don't know, you've served on our school committee, as school committee chair for many years, but I want to give you public congratulations. You're in retirement.
Oh, thank you.
Lyndale Lee was the, as Mr. Denny knows, the principal of the Roosevelt Campus.
Mm-hmm.
Two schools in High Park.
Two schools in High Park.
And a big step for you this June, and I wish you all the best, and, but you're not far away, that I know.
No, and now I have more time, so we'll, we'll definitely get this work done, I promise you.
Not surprised. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Congrats.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seven. We're going to ask our animal control officer, Nancy Bassani, one of the hottest-working people in town that many people don't even know, to come and join us.
Thank you.
And she's just going to give us an update on some contemporary things that are taking place, some of...
Well, I, I'm...
Welcome.
Thank you, and I'm very glad to be here and see all of you again. I'm not, you know, anything you'd like to know, please feel free to ask. This is a very busy time of year for me, with working on license letters, for one, trying to get that all set and finished, and also getting a lot of questions and calls. I know that people wanted to know about the coyote situation. So, I will talk about that for just a couple of minutes. We held an event at the library a couple of months ago. We had Dr. Jonathan Way come in, who is an expert in coyotes, and had do an entire presentation. We had forty people, I believe, that were in attendance. And he has a fantastic movie slideshow. He also has, he's the author of a couple of books, and this is his passion. I have learned a lot from him. I know that there are a lot of concerns about coyotes, about where they are, why people are seeing them, what can we do about them. The, I am limited as an animal control officer. I can give you any kind of information you'd like. I can send you to people who deal with them. Coyotes are here. They are everywhere. They are in cities. They, it's just, they are very adaptable, which is great for them, but is concerning to some people. They are not aggressive. I know people are afraid of them. I absolutely understand that. I have caught bats for the past twenty years, and I'm still skeefer around bats. So, I do understand people's fears. I think education is key. I was actually quite pleased. There was a concern on Milton neighbors. Recently, someone had seen a large coyote in the area of, I believe, Whittier and Old Farm Road. And I see them all the time up at the shelter, especially at night. They just make their rounds. And I think with all the construction, it is kind of moving them down into the Indian Cliffs area. But the reason I was so pleased is because two years ago, most of the comments on these posts were just negative, and, you know, we need to just get rid of them. And there were only two concerns, and the rest of the people were giving out advice and education, and how to live with them, and what you can do to deter them. So, I think that's a huge step, and I hope that continues. If anyone does have concerns, I have no problem coming out. I am the strange woman who runs towards coyotes screaming. And they all, I think, have spread the word, because when I get out of the truck, they go, "Oh, no, it's her." And they, they will leave. People, beeping horns, things like that, which is what people tended to do, and it doesn't work. And the reason it doesn't work is because they're acclimated. They hear that noise all the time. You can hear coyotes howl after sirens go by. They will imitate the sirens. So, they're not intimidated by everyday noises. What they are intimidated by is humans, and humans looking big and large. And I am not kidding you when I say I run towards them screaming, "Get out of here." And they will stop, and they will look, and they're assessing the situation. They don't run. But what they do is kind of go, "Okay," and they turn, and they will walk away. We've not had, we have had attacks on small dogs or cats. They do see them as prey. So, we do have to make sure that your animal is on leash, or you're out-supervising in the yard. Electric fences do not keep any animal out, and they certainly don't keep coyotes out. So, that's not an assurance. But lights on in your backyards, taking the animals out on leash. You can have, I have an air horn in my truck that I have used. Anything loud, you can put pennies in a can. That's a novel noise to them. That will make them turn around and go. A lot of people have asked about trapping. They don't go into traps. They have no need to go into traps. They're, they feast on mice and rats and squirrels and chipmunks. We have a plethora of all of those animals. So, to put something in a trap when they can eat right next to it, generally, what you're going to do is set up that trap, and you're going to be releasing skunks and raccoons and all the other animals that will definitely go in for a meal, cats. And having to keep resetting the trap, it's very difficult to trap coyotes. The thought of killing them, and people say they're protected. You cannot legally kill a coyote unless it's threatening a human life. Division of Fisheries and Wildlife are the overseers. That's their department. Even if we have to euthanize a coyote because it's severely injured, we have to notify them. They are a fur-bearing species. So, they are the authority, and they put out some great information. People call the shelter every day. I have packets of information. We send out immediately. I will answer any questions. It's, again, education, I think, is huge. And there, there are hunting seasons for all these animals. It's not that there aren't hunting seasons. But obviously, these animals are in neighborhoods. They're in backyards. You're not going to go out and use lethal methods in someone's backyard. You just can't do it. It's not safe. Many shepherds are mistaken for coyotes. So, we will get calls for a coyote, or vice versa. I'll get calls for a shepherd, and it's a coyote. But it just shows that, you know, that would be such a danger. You know, you could be hurting an animal that is not a wild animal, someone's pet that has gotten loose. So, you have to be very careful with that. I don't know if anyone here has any specific questions on that issue or any other wildlife. This is the time of year that you will see them. My calls come in, in the spring. They peter off in the summer, and they start again in the fall. And that is a cycle that happens every single year. The coyotes do not leave Milton for the summer. They are still here, but they're not as active, which is why you don't see them. They're in the exact same spots, but they're just not active. The spring, they are mating, they are raising pups, they need to feed them. They come out a lot more to do that. In the fall, they are dispersing into their own territories. So, you're going to see groups of them as opposed to solitary. It's the mating pair. They mate for life, and it's their offspring from the, the spring births. They, those offspring will stick around till probably October, and then they start going off to try to find their own territories. What you'll see in the spring is coyotes that follow you if you're on a walk. They're not following you. They're protecting their young, and they are escorting you away from their den. So, they literally will walk beside you or behind you. They won't approach you. They won't try to hurt you. They are just making sure that you are not going close to their babies. Again, all of that information is available. I have it. I love when people call and question. I want to get it out there. And I absolutely will go out and do my crazy ACO thing and chase them all off. For anybody who calls, the police also will go out, if it's off-hours, to check it out and keep everyone safe. I find there are two schools of thought with the people in Milton. They either are afraid of them and just want them to be moved, or they think they're great and they love them. The problem with that school of thought is, we want to scare them back into the woods. Every time I see a coyote, I yell at them. I personally think they're beautiful. I don't have an issue with them, but I don't want them around people. I want them in the woods. I want them where they need to be for everyone to be safe, the coyotes and the residents. So, it's great to see them if you like them, but for their sake, scare them. Keep them away.
Okay. I have one question. So, I do know, I don't know if the other members of the board know, was it in June, we got a coyote killed in a snare on the lower end, on the west side of town? Is it right? Am I right about that?
A coy, I'm sorry, a coyote what?
Did we have one killed in a snare?
Yes.
That was set, correct? Was that case, I know DCF came in on that. Was it solved or no?
Um, yes. It was a pregnant female. Someone had set up snare traps, which are illegal. And the environmental police came in with us. We asked them to come. That's under their jurisdiction. The person of interest was taken to court. The result was that some community service, it wasn't thoroughly prosecuted. The father who represented him...
I get all that. I just wonder if the case was solved.
So, it was. I mean, we knew from a witness.
People don't usually realize cases like these that happen in a community. Probably what, fifteen years ago, we had, I think, four dogs poisoned, three or four dogs poisoned off the Robin Street, and those, that case was never solved.
Yeah.
Never saw, all poisoned in the yards.
Yep. There's a lot, a lot of, I deal with a lot of different things now than I think years ago. It's not, a lot of it is, yes, loose dogs and, and picking up stray cats or working with wildlife, but we do do a fair amount of investigations and...
Any question, anyone have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but the program at the library, if people missed it, they can access it on our cable.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Because it, it really is a great program, and I know it was this summer...
It was wonderful. Yeah.
Oh, I'm glad. I'm glad, because it, people did seem to really enjoy it. They had great questions that were answered, I thought, really well. And it, I would like to, I know Canton's trying to bring him out to do a similar program, because this is all over the state. I am in contact with all the other ACOs, and it's something that comes up all the time with different wildlife issues. So, that one, again, is timely, because now we're coming into the season where people are going to be seeing more coyotes out and about. Again, they're the same ones. It's just the time of year. They're coming out a little bit more.
Thank you.
Nancy, we had a family of turkeys in my yard just yesterday. Should we yell at them as well, or?
You can. Um, there are, I don't think there are as many turkeys this year. It fluctuates with all the wildlife this year. It's squirrel year, because there's a bump crop of acorns, so we're seeing so many more squirrels. The turkeys, yeah, they, and I've actually had the press calls ask about aggressive turkeys, and I say they don't come to Milton. We just have the very lovely, calm turkeys.
So, these are aggressive turkeys?
They're, no, they're watching turkeys. Turkeys become aggressive when they're mating. And so, a male turkey will see you as a threat if, if you're near the female turkey.
Really?
Yes. It's, yeah, they're not, not too bright, but they will go after you. But, yeah, generally, no. They, you know, they just do their thing. They do eat seed from the lawn, so they're more of a nuisance than anything. They do fly, so people ask me to come catch them, but they fly. I can't do that yet. So, they will go up and roost in trees at night. They will fly away. But, yeah, you can just, you know, shoot them off. I have no problem with people throwing things towards wildlife. Again, anything to keep them wild and not acclimated, because that's when problems start. When they become too acclimated, too comfortable, a lot of people leaving out food for other animals or trying to feed birds, compost, anything like that, brings the raccoons, the squirrels, all the wildlife. So, if we can keep them out and have them be wild, then that's the best bet for everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Just one last question on the, I know we had a copperhead, a person just bit a brain tree by a copperhead.
Yes.
We do have rattlesnakes in the small portion of the woods, not the whole. Is it a small area?
It's not a small area. The, we don't have a large population of rattlesnakes or copperheads. They are there. The trailside group, the Audubon group, is aware of all of their spots that they are, their dens, where they rest. So, they, you know, they absolutely know where they are. The timing when they came out is typical. When there's a lot of dry heat, they're coming out for sunning and also to look for water. So, it's typical. The reason that person, which had finally came out, is they picked up the copperhead. So, I was around, I was able to, pretty exciting for me, deal with a copperhead twice, same one, but it went back to the same yard, and rattlesnake, which I had never seen close up and never had to deal with. And they were the most non-aggressive. They would do anything not to strike. So, that gentleman picked one up, and I believe another person a while back, the same thing. So, obviously, the rule of thumb, don't pick up a snake, and especially one that's venomous. We do not have antivenom at Milton. It is at Mass General. There's also antivenom at one of the Rhode Island hospitals, but you have plenty of time to get there if, in fact, you were bitten, and do not use a tourniquet on a snake bite. That's an old school, but it just makes it worse. But they're fascinating. I find them fascinating. And they literally were right, you know, I was right there, within a foot of it.
Where, Nancy? Where in Milton?
The rattlesnake was on Randolph Ave. And the copperhead was on Ridgewood Road. But all budding the Blue Hills, so they were not far from where they normally are, and they were just taken and relocated. And they, and they have tracked it, and a lot of the rattlesnakes, which I found out, are microchipped. So, they were doing large studies, and they actually put microchips, like we do with dogs and cats, into the, a lot of the rattlesnakes. So, if, in fact, they find one, they scan them, and if they come up with a chip, they know exactly where that one was caught prior, and, yeah, where it should be, so.
Right, and our rattlesnakes are a species that's endemic only to the Blue Hills. Is that correct? I know Tom Palmer wrote a book about them.
He did. Yes, he did. We have the eastern timber rattlesnake, so there are different species.
It's not the diamondback.
But, right, correct. Correct. But there are a lot of snakes that people find. I get calls up from milk snakes, which are totally harmless, but they resemble rattlesnakes, so people have some concern. But, again, rule of thumb, call. Just call. I'm happy to go out. There are people in Mass Audubon that are happy to go out and check them out, and either relocate them or educate on what they are.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone?
Just, I want to thank Nancy. With the town farm and the Pulte project going on up there, there was a lot of disruption.
I know. I've been up there, see it.
Conversations and, and all the drilling and, and stuff that went on is obviously disturbing to a lot of the pets that, that she has up there, so. It was a tough couple of weeks when they were blasting up there. It was a tough couple of weeks when they were blasting up there, and Nancy was very, very patient, so I thank you for that and all your work up there, it's-
Nancy, I'm just curious, like, on any given day, what's the average number of animals that you'll have in the shelter, like in your custody?
Probably anywhere from ten to fifteen cats. We have, on average, about six to eight dogs.
That's what I wanted to know, dogs?
Yeah, about six to eight, and they come and go, so as animal control, if I bring them in as a stray, there's a seven-day stray hole, trying to find an owner, then they get vetted, and then they're transferred to the animal shelter, the Milton Animal League, to be put up for adoption, and the same with cats. Some stay longer, we just, we're having a lot of abandoned animals in the Blue Hills. So the last one we had was a dog who was at death's door and is now recovered and is ready for adoption. But she was found to have a piece of a corn cob stuck in her intestines. So she was rushed to Angel, and they did surgery, and she had a lot of medical issues, it was touch and go. But she is fine now, so some of them stay a bit longer to get ready for adoption, and some of them go out the door pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to echo Michael's comments on, especially to you and your staff, all the volunteers. I don't think, very few people, if they're not a dog owner, an animal owner, or not, could even have an inkling of what goes on up there, and especially in the environment that they work in. I am very eager to see you in a new home, sooner versus later, so, as we all, as we all-
I am as well, and, and hopefully, we're, we're moving in that direction.
Tell Stan it's coming, just tell Stan it's coming.
Yes, and we appreciate, and I appreciate the town very much, and they're part of this. And I know the people in the town, and the officials in the town want this just as much as everyone else. So we appreciate all of your support, and I appreciate all of your support. I know sometimes it's tough with people's concerns, so it really means a lot to me to get the backing from all of you, so thank you.
Many thanks, go home.
All right.
It's not an easy job you have, and I had a chance to see Nancy firsthand in action at my house last year when, when I had a problem, so it's not an easy job. But thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, again, I, I love what I do, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, even when I'm doing laundry and smelling like intact male cats, which is most of the time. But I do love it, and I can't imagine doing anything else, and I can't imagine doing it in another town and not getting the type of support I get. So that's, that's huge, it really is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Take care.
Wolf, okay. I'm going to move to item eight, which is a discussion on the town's current policy on speed bumps, am I taking it? Chase gonna join us on the side?
Uh, no, I can, I can handle this one.
Okay, it's on us then.
So I, I have been approached several times in my tenure in the town by different neighborhood groups looking to mitigate traffic in their neighborhoods. Many cities have gone to it, obviously, we all heard of the unfortunate tragedy in South Boston recently, and, and the work that has been done by the city of Boston to try to slow traffic in those neighborhoods. There is no, there is no scientific formula for doing it, each neighborhood in our town is different, and each neighborhood sees different things. There's a lot of cut-through traffic, there's, there's speeding. I think if the chief were here to speak tonight, he'd talk to it, and I think you can echo it, chief, that there's a lot of volume issues in town, which sometimes get misrepresented as, as speeding. But we were, myself and, and Public Works and, and the Traffic Commission have been approached by several groups that are quite dedicated to looking at some type of solution, be it speed bumps or raised crosswalks. And again, there are other communities, surrounding communities, that are making a concerted effort to do this, so I thought it would be a good time, without speaking to each street or each neighborhood that's come to us, but just kind of get a feel for this board as, as to, you know, what, what you think and what some of the things are out there. A lot of the work is, is very cost prohibitive, when, when you get into a major construction phase, and John Thompson and Chase Berkeley are here. When, when we did a lot of the work out, we, collective, royal we, when Public Works did a lot of the work out on Edghill Road in front of Collycott and Cunningham School last year, a lot of the money that is spent on that project is done to mitigate traffic, either bumping out the crosswalks or moving traffic signals in a place where it's more pedestrian or bicycle-friendly, with the ultimate goal of trying to make sure that each mode of transportation in town can get through the town as safely as possible. So I kind of consider this a preliminary discussion to see, you know, what, what's out there in the town. I've had independent conversations with Chief Grant, Chief King, Chase Berkeley more often, and just what, what about what we can do to mitigate traffic? And, and make sure that it's safe for not only our students, obviously, but people that work and, and live in our town, and, and people that spend money in our business communities. So just, just an exploratory, one of the neighborhoods is actually talking about investing in speed bumps themselves, something that could put, be put in seasonally. Most of the public safety entities don't, don't favor that.
Oh, they don't.
When you have a heavy vehicle, ten thousand pound ambulance with a, a patient that could be on, you know, some type of equipment, they frown upon it. Other people's perspective on speed bumps is that people slow down and then speed up in between them. In, in my capacity in Boston, we found speed bumps that were installed were then uninstalled and moved because that thud, thud that you hear out in front of your house, if, you know, if the speed bump is put in front of twelve-row street, someone wants it two months later to be put in front of number ten-row street, because that constant-
Very true.
Right. But, so just, I, I kind of wanted to put it out there to this board, and, and we've received some material from some of these neighborhoods who, quite, quite honestly, are passionately involved in making sure that people who move through their neighborhood, and again, each neighborhood's different, that they do it as, as safely as possible. What we can do as a town to, to mirror that as best we can. Obviously, you know, enforcement and, and policing would be the answer in a perfect world, but that's just not something that we can do. We can't have a cruiser at every intersection. We've, we've put in our raid, uh, speed radar monitors, which are collecting information that we use to redeploy our assets, and we've put in, and have one gone missing, flashing red stop signs, but we're going to continue to try to improve this stuff. I just wanted to kind of throw it out here to this board and, and continue the dialogue along with the Traffic Commission to see if, if we can come up with some neighborhood-specific solutions. And again, it's not, it's not cookie cutter, what, what might work in one neighborhood won't work in another, and, and, you know, see if there's an appetite for a pilot somewhere in town, or, you know, just-
I believe in my historical that the two speed bumps that were on, I don't even know if they're there anymore on Thatcher Street, or they've worn down, I believe that was a, like a pilot. And I know one aspect of it, the speeding up, once you went over it, you went right, you were right back at the other, the same speed by the time you got to the second one. I welcome your effort, because it's, it's not easy, traffic is not, as I've said a hundred times, is not an amenity of this community, it just isn't, it's a tough thing to deal with every day. Any questions, anybody, anyone on that?
I'm not sure if Mike's asking us for general commentary on the subject or not, you know, I-
Yeah, just the preliminary-
Yeah, so I mean, I have a-
Observations or concerns that you've heard.
What I've discovered so far in the four to five months that I've been a selectman, this to me is the issue that people come to me most frequently about. I'm sure my colleagues probably can identify with that, and, you know, I refer to it as the law of unintended consequences. For every one step forward, there tends to be two steps back, so something that you mentioned earlier. Speed bumps, in theory, they're great, but a lot of times, people will come out in opposition to the speed bump for what you just referred to, the, the stopping and then the accelerating. So that will happen in front of someone's home, and they'll get more upset by the stopping and the re-acceleration than they will be by the car just progressing unimpeded at its normal rate of speed, even if it's traveling above the speed limit. So that's one thing you run into. Again, it's sort of like whack-a-mole, if you put some sort of traffic calming measure or traffic deterrent in one neighborhood, the traffic's going to pop up somewhere else, so that leads to other residents on other streets perhaps becoming dissatisfied with. So, again, there's, I'm not saying one solution is better than the other, it's just you're not offering a real genuine solution with problem, you're just moving the problem geographically to another location. The flashing stop signs, I think, have been successful for the most part. I did follow up with some of the neighborhoods several weeks after they were installed to see what the effect was, whether or not people, you know, abided by them, and then after a while, it was, you know, normal course of business or not. The feedback I got was that they were effective, and they were working, and they were an improvement on the non-flashing stop signs, so I think that's great. And the other thing too, I think, up to and until we fill that position, which I think, and Mike, you can speak to this a little bit, that we intend to fill next year, where we have that part-time position of a traffic enforcement officer. As a board, we can't continue to ask the chief of police to turn the, the police department into the Milton Traffic Enforcement Department. Before I was a selectman, I wasn't aware that there were only four patrol cars on an eight-hour shift. And to pull one of those patrol cars off for one to two hours, it's something we can do from time to time, but we can't do it consistently on a regular basis, and offer the, you know, public safety level of protection that the town deserves in the normal course of police work. So it's, it's not a long-term solution, it's something we can do temporarily. So, you know, I'm continuing to have these dialogues and these discussions, and believe me, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road. I live in the town of Milton too, so, but it's, it's just one of those things where we, we have to continue to, to have these dialogues and discussions. And hopefully, we can come up with a, a workable solution with respect to what you mentioned about that neighborhood and that individual, and the, the private residents, perhaps investing in some traffic calming measures in the way of speed bumps. I think we would need a buy-in from, from everybody that lives on that portion of the street. We would need an opt-in in the form of a signature. Otherwise, you run the risk of running into the problem, which is other people speaking up and saying, this is worse. You've created a, a situation now that's worse than the one that was, you know, existing prior, so. For what it's worth, that's been my, my observation in the last four or five months.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, did, did you have something to say? Oh, um, well, I live on Hillside Street, there are a lot of speed bumps. And I think by and large, I, I would say people are happy they're there. But what that points to for me is that every neighborhood is different, and it depends upon the traffic that's going through, and the width of the roads, and who's living on the roads at that time, are there a lot of children? For me, looking at how something would be financed, makes me ask, well, when a neighborhood comes before the Traffic Commission and says, we'd like you to look at the following measures and see if they're acceptable. I guess my question is, well, how often are they given a no because of finances? As you said, I, I just think that it, it, not that we shouldn't look at a policy, but I think it would be very difficult to, to come up with a policy that says that traffic calming should be financed by residents or the town, or a, a combination. I think we'd have to have really strict criteria so that there's fairness that's ensured in some way. But I, I'd be open to hearing how we could have a workable policy that's fair, but the neighborhoods are all, all very different, and as Richard said, you look at Thatcher Street, and what, they're, they're, they have sort of those tables, which is very different than the flatter speed bumps in, in neighborhood that I am, I am in. And then you go to governors, and it's something completely different, it's a, a real bump. And as far as removable speed bumps that the neighborhood is responsible for, I mean, they, I would think they'd have to pay for those, because, and, and what's the enforcement mechanism for getting them out and then back in by a specific time, so I think there are a lot of complications.
So I, I will disseminate to this group, I've been looking through the city of Boston in two thousand seventeen to the Neighborhood Slow Streets Initiative. And the neighborhoods, I think forty-nine neighborhoods participated in this, and there was a series of qualifications that led to the city investing in seven of those forty-nine neighborhoods in some way, shape, or form to mitigate and slow traffic in the neighborhoods. It's something I'm working my way through now, and I'm not sure if it's something that could apply to our town or, or how we would apply it, but I'll, I'll disseminate that study to this group. It was, it was very thorough, it was a, a large investment in the end that the city of Boston made in their infrastructure, that adopted a lot of these neighborhoods to the needs of the three different modes of travel that we see most often in, in, in communities now. It's not just vehicular, so I will disseminate that as I, as I work my way through it as well, and DPW director is familiar with it as well. And there was a series of qualifications that, that they, they used as a panel to try to determine what, what would best fit, because there were so many neighborhoods that were crying out for, and I'm not seeing it to that magnitude, but I think collectively at this table, we've probably heard from, you know, a dozen neighborhoods in town that are looking to do something in the way of, of slowing it, so we would be remiss if we didn't take a look at it, so. We'll get the ball rolling, and I appreciate the, the engagement by these neighborhoods, and, and some we've engaged with several times, and, and they're, they're trying to work through it themselves, which, which I appreciate.
I just, you're, go ahead, you want to go?
I was gonna say, so, so the most persuasive and the primary consideration for me is the public safety law, and the concerns of ambulances and fire engines and, and, and police cars. So what's the counter to that? What, what is the, I mean, what, to those who, who are in favor of speed bumps, what's the counter to the public safety concerns of those vehicles that have, would have to, you know, go over those speed bumps?
So let's just, oh, go ahead, go, go ahead.
Chief Grant reinforced the story to me today that when he was on the back of a truck, one of his coworkers, who probably didn't have their seatbelt on, hit one of the raised crossings on Thatcher Street, not looking forward, but looking out of the side of the vehicle, and probably raised his head a good foot and a half and, and literally concussed himself, because the vehicle was traveling at such a high rate of speed to get to a call.
The one that I was familiar with, in, in Chief Grant's concerns are echoed everywhere, Commissioner Finn, Chief Ullia, Boston EMS talks about. I, the incident I was familiar with was on Thatcher, was actually a major fire in town, Boston Fire was coming in on mutual aid responding to the fire, and you're going into a phenomenon where you don't even know, they didn't have them, and he, they hit it, and the, the door of the truck actually popped out, his engine, I think it was helmet, when I was crushed by the tire. The driver just got the officer just before he fell out, so it's, but the, so I just, there were two things I just want to say, because our DPW director and our, and our town engineer here tonight, and most people don't realize, not just the enforcement aspect of it, and the police department gives out thousands of tickets predates me during my time and after my time, because we have an influx of traffic every single day. We have one thirty-eight, we have twenty-eight, we have Adams Street, we have Granite Avenue, those are streets where speed, they're going to focus on the, they're going to always have to be drawn to those locations. Number two is that everything the DPW does, from the, from the more recent, the flashing stop signs, to the yield signs, to the crosswalks, everything, the safe roads, the school projects, the, the paving they've done, the curbing they do in streets, where they narrow streets, that people don't even realize it, because narrowing the streets is found to be effective in slowing traffic. So you can't, if it isn't as wide, you can't go as fast. These are things that John and Chase and, and everyone there, they do it all the time, because they understand the volume and the pressure that we get. And I, I'll just reiterate, reiterate one more time, if you don't understand the traffic issue in Milton, it's as simple as this. There are six bridges, five of them out of Boston, come through this town, just look at the daily count on the Matapan Bridge, sixty thousand cows a day. That'll tell you the pressure and traffic that we get each and every day. And so to Mr. Farrington's comments about moving it, it is, and, and not, not everything- And, and not, not everything that comes to the traffic commission or to the DPW is from neighborhood complaints. They're very proactive in this and I, I understand that. And I know it's very, it's very difficult and it's very complex, but I appreciate your emphasis, but it is a very, something that they work very hard on this all the time, each and every day. So, I just want to listen to it.
And just one more thing, selectmen, coming from a public works background, speed bumps and raised crossings from a plowing perspective is troublesome, both from a public safety issue of the driver not being able to see it, but also the maintenance of it and the damage that the plow blade can do to it. And then the, to replace that infrastructure is, is, it's, it's cost prohibitive.
So, so I don't hear, and I'd be interested to hear if there is any counterargument to the public safety concerns. I mean, I, because that, to me, is really determinative.
I've, I've always felt that, well, the biggest thing to me was, and it's a common saying here, I've heard so many chiefs and committees that where you have raised intersection speed bumps, you slow down for it, you come right, I mean, we did it. We started on this street right here and they're right back at the same speed by the, or faster by the time they get to the second one. So, it's, it's not, it's not a perfect, it may help us. And I'm all for that. If we can find a way to do it, I'm all for it. To Michael's concern, I don't think the public safety concern's gonna go away, but I don't think it's an end-all be-all. It's just one more tool in the toolbox. If, if there's a way, I've seen some of these newer raised ones in Cambridge. To be honest, I kind of like them. But again, this is the northeast plowing. You're right, all those things come into effect. You get one hard winter and you gotta go and rebuild them every year. That's, that's the tough part.
What do they like, Richard? Like.
It's like a raised, there's a made-out of them, it's like a paver. And I don't even know, it's, it's not really the paver that, but they've got them in like really dense, like high-rise, real narrow areas with high pedestrian, you know, like Kendall Square, places like that where, where they've got, you know, thousands of people working every day. But they've caught my eye and I kind of liked them when I saw them. They're different than anything that we have here, but I'm sure they're expensive. I'm sure that what they have is expensive, but.
We'd love to have some of Cambridge's, Mike.
Oh, I know, I hear you.
Well, Mike, one thing, and Chase, while you're here, so I can, while I have your attention. One thing I think is very effective and it's low cost is repainting the crosswalks. I mean, I think that gets people's attention. You know, I know that they're gonna fade over time, certainly, but to the extent that we could try to keep up with that, I think that that's very, very effective because that, I, I notice it as a driver and I immediately, you know, slow down because I know I'm approaching a crosswalk. Again, the flashing stop signs, I think, are great to the extent we're able to secure, you know, more of those and install them anywhere around town. And if we can eventually get to the point where we have a part-time traffic enforcement officer, you know, two day, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, four hours a day, five days a week, twenty hours, I think that that, again, as Richard said, it's another tool in the toolbox. It's not a magic bullet, but people will be less inclined to pull down those streets that they do not enter if they know there's a potential, you know, better than not that there's gonna be someone there to write them a ticket. I think, so if we can get to that point, and I know we're, you know, ways away on that, maybe six, nine months, but that would be great if we could get there. So, I think that that would do, do wonders.
Yeah, and they've done a lot of work. About two weeks ago, just before, in the middle of the Hendry's project there, they were restriping, repainting the stop lines and the, and the crosswalks in and around Elliott. And I'm sure there've been somewhere more recently that I'm not aware of, but Chase could, and they do, you notice it. There is some equipment that we're thinking of investing in. They, they tend to paint more than thermoplast because of the, the price of the thermoplast. But there's a new tool that Tom McCarthy and Chase have taken a look at, which is kind of a hybrid. The paint wears away a little bit quicker, but it's, you, you can put it down quicker and it's less expensive. Thermoplast is the way to go, it's just, it's very, very expensive. But they've been looking at this piece of equipment and I believe it, it's gonna be part of our, our operational toolbox next year where it's, it's kind of a hybrid of both. But that, it's, I'm glad you noticed it because there is work being done to redo them because, you know, they do work.
Chase is nodding his head back there, I guess.
Is this something that we can ask the, the public? Because I, something like this, I would defer to public safety and public works and what their recommendations are to us. Is this something we can ask those departments working with the town administrator, who's got a lot of experience in the city, to maybe come back to the traffic commission or the new traffic mitigation committee on and, you know, take some time with those committees to look at this issue before it comes back to the board?
Good idea.
Yeah.
Sure.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We good?
Yeah, just thank you for hearing this and I'm, I'm sure you've all heard from probably.
It's a tough subject. It's not an easy subject. So, you wish it was easier and that you could.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, we've taken a look at some of the work. The DPW director went out to Day Boulevard to look at some of the work that they did after the tragedy in South Boston. And, I mean, I've seen a video where it's, it's the, the speed bumps on Day Boulevard. People are still traveling over them thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. It's, you know, it's, it's driver behavior at times too. So, it's, it's somewhat disheartening when, when that investment is made and you still get driver behavior that doesn't, that doesn't follow along.
Okay, good?
Thank you.
All good? I'm gonna jump ahead to item ten. We have Caroline Consella, our health director, and the chair of Mass PAC, as well as Laurie, and the chair, as well as Laurie Stillman, to present on behalf of Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition to discuss Milton Cares Post-Overdose Response Team and a recent DFC grant award, which was given to the town of Milton. Welcome and good evening.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for welcoming us tonight to discuss two new exciting programs. I'm Caroline Consella. I'm the Milton Health Director and a public health nurse. I'm also chair of the Substance Abuse Coalition. I live at ten Hillcrest Road in Milton. And this is Laurie Stillman. She's our program director for the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and she lives at twenty-nine Waldo Road in Milton. So, the first is the Milton Cares Post-Overdose Response Team. The Milton Police and the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition have teamed up with area addiction counselors and recovery coaches to reach out to Milton residents who may be struggling with drugs or alcohol dependency. And the second piece we're gonna speak about is the Drug-Free Community Grant. The Milton Public Health Department was notified last month by the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration that the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition will be awarded a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year for the next five years to focus on youth substance abuse prevention in the town. Wonderful. The Health Department would not have been able to procure these grants without Laurie Stillman, her hard work and perseverance. Thank you, Laurie. And now I'd like to turn it over to Laurie to discuss further details about those two new programs.
Thank you, Caroline, and thank you Board of Selectmen and, and Town Administrator Michael Dennehy. We're really so thrilled about this. And just to step back, the Substance Abuse Coalition was started about four years ago by Caroline Consella and Vicki McCarthy. And we really have been moving our work along with a grant from the Blue Hills Community Health Alliance. The thing is, and we've been coming before you for years now saying, you know, this grant is gonna end in September twenty eighteen. And most other towns, their town coffers basically support the Substance Abuse Coalition and we're gonna have to disband unless we find another alternative. And then September twenty eighteen, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration called to say that they're gonna be saving the day. And what's really incredible about this is, you know, I've administered many grants over my professional career. It's rare to find a grant that you get for more than two, three years max. And so, you spend your time always chasing grants. This is a gift of five years and an option to renew for another five years. The other gift is that we were required to match the hundred twenty-five thousand dollars with a town commitment. And Chairman Wells, you've said many times, when there is a need, our community steps up. And one of the hardest parts of writing this grant was thinking about how I was gonna raise a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to match it. And everybody stepped up to the plate. So, fortunately, the match can come from in-kind personnel donations to cash donations.
Soft versus hard, right?
Soft versus hard, exactly. But I do want to acknowledge the ways that the more hard dollars came in. And those are from Senator Walter Timmeltie. Put a legislative earmark in the state budget for us to get thirty thousand dollars and that starts actually this week. So, that was an amount of money. The Mike's Five K Substance Abuse Walk raised twenty-seven thousand dollars. We didn't touch that money from last year because I knew that we would need it for the match for this year. The Milton BID Hospital is donating about thirteen thousand dollars. The Milton Times publisher is donating a lot in terms of, they're going to put a quarter-page ad with messages that we put forward every other week, every month for the coming year. And we have incredible volunteers and a wealth of professionals, public health professionals who know about evaluation, about substance use, about public health strategies, who live here in Milton, who are donating their time and their time was worth money. So, Caroline's time is donated, there's some school time. Chief John King's time is in there. But what's so incredible about our coalition is that we have twelve sectors from our community all working together to make the policies and the programs of this community. So, we have the chief of police, we have the, we have people from business, we have students, we have the Rotary Club, we have the program director of Cunningham Park, we have healthcare professionals, we have people in recovery. And we're all working together and we are trying to align our work and our priorities to make a difference. I'd like to sort of wrap up in, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but the Substance Abuse Mental Health Administration dictates to us a little bit about what we need to do. And so, in this first year, they require us to focus on two drugs of concern in the community. Now, three years ago, we did a community assessment of substance abuse in this community. And I was really scared to death to be the messenger about what our problems were. But actually, I had one person say to me they were concerned about how real estate would be affected by making it known what our issues were in this community around drug abuse and alcohol addiction. But the rest of the community has opened up their arms and said, "We want to know more and want to know how we can work together." We have over five hundred fifty people now on our mailing list, all residents of Milton. And so, we're going to be focusing on the two areas that our community assessment pointed out were the biggest problems for our youth. And that is binge drinking, that's drinking five drinks in one sitting. And we have twice the rate that we, of the state. And we also have high rates of using marijuana. And, you know, when I tell kids about that, I see a lot of smirks. But the reality is, and you know this very well, marijuana is thirty, fifty times higher than it was thirty, forty years ago. Much of it is being vaped now. Vaping is a huge problem in schools across the country. They're oftentimes tinged with nicotine, one of the most addictive substances known to humankind. Unfortunately, profiteers are looking for ways to substitute our cigarette addiction problem, which we have gotten rid of through public health means, with a whole nother addiction and we have to take it very seriously. Our kids use marijuana at about thirty-three percent higher rate than the state. So, those are the two that we're gonna focus on. Let me say a good news story, which is these coalitions that are funded by the Drug-Free Communities federal grants make a difference. Falmouth, for instance, in eight years of their Drug-Free Community Grant, they cut their alcohol use amongst kids in half and reduced marijuana consumption from thirty-seven percent in twenty-eleven to twenty-three percent in twenty-fifteen. We are gonna be part of a national evaluation team. And the national evaluation looks at all the drug-free communities, see what they've done. And the most recent evaluation showed that drug-free communities, on average, reduce alcohol consumption by twenty-seven percent in their communities and reduce marijuana use by thirteen percent. Reducing any marijuana use is actually, I mean, if you could just hold it steady because it's been climbing so much over the years, you're doing good. But generally speaking, we can cut, we can see these differences if we work together as a community. We ask that you join us. Our coalition will probably be making recommendations of ways that we could adopt policies and practices and norms in our community that will change the, the practices and the beliefs and behaviors of our residents, both adult and young. And we're very, very excited and feel like this is a real gift. So, we're very happy about that.
Your face shows it.
The other, the other opportunity, we got another grant. And I know the Chief King has described it a little bit, but the Milton Cares one is really great too. And that's because it, it's not costing our community a penny. Again, this grant allowed me to research how different communities work on this problem by, through the police department. They partner with social workers, recovery coaches, substance abuse counselors, and they go and visit the families who have had an overdose. In the past month, we've lost three Milton residents, young, young people. And you can, you know, my son knew two of them. They're, this is, it's not like this is not a problem.
Not Milton High School now, they, they went to Milton High School, yeah.
Went to Milton High School. That, it usually happens, the most prevalent issues are young males in their twenties, but you know that they don't start in their twenties. This, this, this is an adolescent brain disease. It's about using drugs early on and changing the brain to make them more susceptible to addiction when they get older. But, so this whole point is to say, when a nine-one-one call comes in, the police know who overdosed in their homes. They immediately have a team that we set up from Manic Community Health Center. They have a substance abuse counselor. And the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative. They're making a recovery coach available to us. These are people who are certified but have lived experience with recovering from addiction. And they're gonna go to the people's homes. And our Health Department has put together packets of information for folks about how they can get help. And we can go to their homes and actually set them up with, you know, get them into rehab right there. Fallon Ambulance is another, they stepped up to the plate and so that they would, at no cost, transport a person who's ready to go into recovery and get them into the hospital if that's what they need. This is like, it's just kind of incredible what we have put together here for our community. It's called Milton Cares for a reason. We don't want there to be stigma. We want people to know that they're not gonna be arrested. This is also for alcohol addiction, not just a drug addiction. Alcohol addiction is a much bigger issue for our community than drugs are, but it hopefully will save lives.
The Health Department put together these packages. Susan Poirier, our public health nurse, put together all these resources. The purple is for the person who overdoses and purple's a healing color. We chose that. And teal is for the family. So, it's two-pronged. It's for, if the, if the person is there and also to help the family.
Yes, the family will be trained and be given Narcan, the life-saving drug, overdose drug. It will be trained on how to use it because we know that anybody who's overdosed once is likely to overdose again. So, there's a lot of interventions here. We're really excited about it and we're really excited that we're gonna be able to continue our work and we look forward to working with you over the years. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
Couple, couple of questions before you go. Are we able to offer individuals access to a recovery home? Are we able to find them a bed if they request one?
Yes.
We are?
Yes. I mean, it, it's tough sometimes, but police oftentimes are the, get priority.
Yeah.
So, we have a list of all of the different places. And we also, the state has a live, the Massachusetts Substance Abuse Hotline has live information of where there are beds available at all times, all times, twenty-four seven. So, yes, we can get people in. It's rare that we couldn't do it.
So, I mean, I, it's not so much the availability. Certainly, that's one step in the process. But it's, it's having a, a, access to that availability, which can be very, very difficult if the person isn't plugged into the right. person isn't plugged into the right influencer, if you will. I mean, they're, they're so tough to come by these beds and, you know.
Well, each of them will be getting, in their packet is a business card of a recovery coach.
Okay.
The recovery coach will go on the visit and introduce themselves. They'll assess, see whether the person is ready to go into recovery. The 24 to 48 hour period after an overdose is a window when they're more likely to go into recovery than not. But with that card, 24/7, they can call that recovery coach and say, "I need help. I want, I'm ready." And that recovery coach will come to their home and help them get into.
That's great. That's great. And what about for the families that feel their loved one is, you know, a danger to themselves? Are we able to put them in touch with legal representation that could potentially start like a civil commitment action?
Yes. The Mass Bar, we found out, provides free legal assistance so that families can do a Section 35. Section 35 would be an involuntary commitment of somebody who they think is imminently in danger of hurting themselves or others. It's a last resort, but we do, we will put them in touch with attorneys to be able to get that assistance.
Great, thank you.
Anybody? Good? So thank you, before you leave, though, so I just want to touch on something different to you since I have Caroline here. You're here and the task that you're dealing with is a, is a difficulty that touches all of our communities. And in many cases, particularly in the opioid cases and script drugs, it can be life-altering for a long time. But I do want to say to you, Caroline, there are many people in this town who do a ton for our young people. And your husband, Michael, I have watched his work with young girls in this town. It's an amazing thing. He's a coach. He coaches young girls in softball and baseball. The time and commitment he gives to those kids to keep them in a, you know, a positive structure environment is very impressive. Please relay that to him. Thank you both so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm going to jump tight on, I would not, I want to go to eleven and then come back tonight.
Right.
All right?
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask our planning director, Bill Clark, our DPW director, Chase Brookley, and our town engineer, who's making a special appearance here tonight, John Thompson, to join us. I thought you gave out night meetings, John.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I thought it'd be a good idea, we received a letter last week from Mast dot. The town planner can explain it, but I think it's, it's a good jumping off point for the design piece of this, when we get, really start to get the, to the ground on, on this project. So Bill's going to explain the letter and what it means, and then I kind of hand it off figuratively and literally to the Public Works Department as this becomes a public works project, as we try to maximize the earmarks that FHWA and our state leaders secured for us, so. Bill?
Okay. As Mike just said, we did receive our notice to proceed the design agreement between the Town of Milton and the Mass Department of Transportation for deck reconstruction over the Southeast Expressway. We received it from Mast dot's Highway Division last week. The notice has a scope of work for the East Milton Deck project. The project will have Mast dot advertise and construct the project once the design engineer submits their plans. Currently, we have plans that have been submitted at the 25% level. There are a few comments that-
Fifty, fifty, I think. Are we at 50?
No, 25. It goes 25, 70.
Okay.
We put in the 25, and there were a few comments that needed to be addressed that didn't get addressed. The plans are there, most of the stuff was addressed, and then we ran out of money. The addressing of the 25% should be finished this week. Should comments come back from Mass Highway, it will come back under a, it's called the Comment Resolution Meeting, and it's within the departments at Mast dot. There's like 13 different departments at Mast dot, so it doesn't, it's not one of two people. Regardless if we need the Comment Resolution Meeting, Milton and Howard Stein-Hudson, our design engineer, are working with Mast dot's project manager for this project, Al Miller. Al has already set up meetings with Mass Highway's District Six and other Mast dot design reviewers in an attempt to bring all the pertinent parties back up to speed that we want to submit 75 ASAP. Actually, we're looking at a date of mid-November for 75%. So we are working this fast. Milton and Howard Stein-Hudson have met with Mast dot. We met back in, with Federal Highway, too, back in October of 2015 to go over all the proposed changes that came, mainly the changes to the bike and pedestrian accommodations. However, since that was three years ago, it's different staff and stuff. We want no one to be surprised. We want them to know that when the 75 is here, what the changes will be from 25 to 75. A timeline and completions, I already said, puts it just before Thanksgiving. Howard Stein-Hudson is actually working with the project manager this week to set up a meeting between Mast dot and the structural engineer, Gil Engineering, to discuss the leaks in the, in the membrane onto 93. Comments regarding the waterproofing membrane seem to be the biggest unknown point, unknown at this point. We know that there are leaks in certain areas. We don't know where those leaks are. Gil will do that with District Six. Howard Stein-Hudson will let us know as soon as those meetings get set up. Under the tasks and costs, Milton will provide Mast dot, through the design engineer Howard Stein-Hudson, a complete set of plans, specifications, estimates for this project, and it will be advertised by Mast dot. Our expected target date for that will be January of 19. Per the scope, Milton shall obtain any and all applicable permits required by the local, the state, federal agencies unless otherwise directed by Mast dot. Also, Milton will be responsible for obtaining all the easements, the property right interest, and the right-of-way appraisals needed for construction as directed by Mast dot. We actually took care of this with a town meeting article, Article 24 in 2016. It's the same process we went through when the deck was rebuilt in the 90s. And from that particular list of people, there are three different, there's only three name changes in that entire list. So we know what the easement is, we know what the, there, all the permanent takings have already been done, we're just going back for the temporary easements at this point. Mast dot will reimburse the Town of Milton 80% of the actual cost incurred for the complete design project. Milton will be responsible for a 20% share of the design documents. The total estimated final design for this project is $329,911.44. Mast dot will reimburse Milton up to $263,929.80. Balances Milton's at $66,000. The future maintenance of the reconstructed project will continue to be the sole responsibility of the Town of Milton. That's all the documents that we've had. That's in the scope. That's where I brought it to this point. And now, since it's a construction project, as Michael said, I'm not figuratively, I'm literally handing it over to-
The DPW because it's become open operational.
It's a construction project from this point on.
So I think it'd be a good time to thank Bill for all his work that he's put in on this project. It's, you know, whenever you have multi-jurisdictional issues, in, in my time in government, and you have federal earmarks and a state highway and a town and a consultant, but Bill has spent countless hours on this project to bring it to this point, so I think Bill deserves a lot, a huge thank you for getting it to this point. I know a lot of people have been anticipating this and waiting for it anxiously. We have a clock that Lynda Lee would like dusted off, so make sure that's part of the design.
She's not alone.
Yeah. No, thank you, Bill.
One last thing is, I know that select person Conlon has been, you know, adamant that we amend the airspace license.
I have not let John Flynn forget this at all on her behalf.
You didn't? And did I give you enough copies?
Yeah.
I have an, thank you. The, this is a draft. You don't have to take and do anything with it now. Just take it, please. Next time Chase comes in, you can talk to him about it. John and I spoke about it earlier today. He gave it to us tonight, so.
Great, thank you very much, Bill.
This came from John Flynn?
Yes.
This evening, yeah.
Anytime you see those numbers in the bottom left-hand corner, those are John's.
So can I just add?
Absolutely.
John and I wanted to be here because we're very enthusiastic about accepting this project, and we do appreciate the amount of time and discussion and debate that has led this project from a conceptual one to, you know, a construction project. You know, some of the short-term work we're going to have to do to get this to a point where it can be advertised and bid is some right-of-way work that needs to take place on the areas, the properties surrounding the deck and where the construction work will impact that. So I just asked John to explain that because I don't, I don't know if we've gone into detail on that portion of it. It is something the town has gone through in similar projects that are under Mast dot control, such as the safe route to school. But I'll just let him take a moment just to explain that process and, you know, what financial responsibilities the town will have as part of that.
Sure. Good evening to the board. Happy to be here. Yeah, so as Chase mentioned, there is a right-of-way acquisition that the town is responsible for as part of this project. Basically, anytime the federal transportation dollars are funding a project, Federal Highway, before they commit the money, wants to make sure that, that, that there will be no surprises during construction. So part of that means securing even temporary easements if you need to touch private property at all, even if it's just to transition to work that's being constructed in the public right-of-way. You know, there may be some minor grading or some minor transitional work that has to be done on private property, and, and the town does, is responsible to secure formal temporary easements for that. We, we went through a similar project, as Chase mentioned, for the Safe Route to School project at Glover School. And it's essentially going to entail the town hiring an appraiser, licensed appraiser to go out. Howard Stein-Hudson is going to create what's known as right-of-way acquisition documents. And from those documents, the appraiser will go out and look at the, all the necessary temporary easements that the town will need to construct the project, put an actual value on those, and the town will basically take those temporary easements through eminent domain, through an acquisition process where the private property owners are paid a fair market value for those easements. So, so as far as the commitments on the town, on the town's part, essentially, it would be hiring an appraiser. It also has to be reviewed by a second, a review appraiser, essentially. There'll be monetary payments to private property owners for the values of those easements. And then lastly, there'll be recording fees to, to memorialize those, those easements at the Registry of Deeds.
Do we have an idea how many? Is it four? Am I, do I, somewhere it's on a four in my head, but maybe I'm, no, more than that. More? More? Okay.
Yeah, there are some owners that cover multiple properties, so the number of owners is less than the, the number of easements, yeah.
This goes from Bryant Ave to Jubileeville's property on that side.
Right.
Goes from early on the east side down to the first gas station.
Okay.
Yeah. And so the, basically, the upcoming milestones, we'll be watching and working very diligently with the production of the 75% in November and submission of that. The right-of-way should come right behind that in December, and then advertisement shortly after that in January, or at least during that winter. It's important to make that advertisement date in the fiscal year. So based on some real preliminary discussions we've had with Howard Stein-Hudson, we're hoping that at least the pre-construction, what we call shop drawing analysis and review is in end of calendar year 19 and construction calendar year 20. So that, that's how things look today, obviously, early stages, but promising for sure.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions so far?
Yeah. And if you don't mind, I just wanted to reinforce, back on the speed bump target. But, but one thing I've noticed, and, you know, DPW, we wear a lot of hats, and personally and professionally, so the father of three who stands in the middle of the street watching his own kids has to also keep in mind, roads are designed to move cars, and that's our, one of our primary goals, is to move them safely and efficiently. So we do seize every opportunity in our construction process to implement traffic calming measures.
I know you do.
A perfect example, if you have the time, is to ride down Blue Hill Terrace Street, where prior to the construction project that's ongoing right now, there was no real defined line between sidewalk and street, and you had kids walking that border. And now we'll have curving installed in sidewalks that are protected with a grass buffer, and it's just a lot safer. So we do try to implement those at every opportunity, and John is very, very diligently paying attention to all the technologies and best practices of all the communities around us to implement those as we can.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We all do it. You said it better than I was trying, that's what I was trying to say.
I had time to think about it.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just two things. One, timing. So Howard Stein-Hudson told us it would probably take two construction seasons, and so I believe they told us 2020, and then, and then some additional work in 2021. You probably are aware, but if you're not, I'll make you aware, that this board is really interested in moving this project, as, moving it along as fast as humanly possible. So anything we can do to move it along, it, it sounds like there's no way to start it in the construction, 19 construction season. But to the extent that we can have things teed up, and if it turns out we could, we can, that would be great. I just, the only thing I would say to you, now that you own this, is, is there is a real interest here in moving this along as quickly as possible, and if we can get it done in 2020, as opposed to having it lap over into 2021, all the better. So anything we can do, anything we, this board can do to help move things along, I think, I think we're all committed to that. The second thing is, I think the deck looks better than it's looked with those planters. It's, I think it looks better. Is there, is there anything that, that we can do with that street that, you know, in the interim to make it look even better as well, for the next two years as we're waiting for this?
You talking about the pavers on that street?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that there is, and we don't want to spend a lot of money because we're going to be tearing it up anyway, but if there's anything we can do, when I was driving, I was driving by it the last week, I thought, you know, the only thing, it looks better on the front, on the, on each end, it's just the street kind of looks kind of strange there in the middle. So I don't know if there's anything you can do, but, but, but if you can, that would be great.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take a look at it. We have the Halloween walk upcoming, so we'll be making a push to, to clean the deck up just for that event. So it's a good opportunity to, to do some work. And nobody wants to pave the streets around the deck more than John and I, so we share your appreciation for accelerating the project in any way possible.
I agree.
I'm just going to comment on that part of it. Many years ago, I thought that the paving of Granite Ave and the streets around it was part of the project, and then someone quickly told me, "No, that's, there's no money for that." So that's probably something that we should be thinking about as, as this project starts winding down, to make sure that Granite Ave and some of the street improvements is just, the road conditions over there are just not good for the amount of traffic that goes through there, so if, and I don't know, I know you have a timeline for the roads in town that goes out something like 30 years, but is that section of Granite Ave and the surrounding streets, are they, in the near future, that some improvements will be made there so that, once we get the deck project done, we're not left still with roads that are in pretty poor condition around it?
So my understanding is that, that there is paving included in this project, so-
That's right. I, I thought so too.
I had thought so initially, too, but then I thought we had heard that the signalization and the traffic improvements were going to take up all of the earmark.
Certainly, we can double-check, but just given the amount of, you know, trenching, excavation, and curb work that's involved with the project, as well as the striping that's, you know, there's going to be a lot of new traffic striping and lane assignments and things like that. So I would be shocked if, if the project didn't include getting all the surrounding roadways paved.
Okay, if it does, then that's, that's great, but I thought we had been told something different. different.
Within the footprint, those roads get repaved. Like that piece of Boulevard, that piece of Granite, that piece of Bryant.
Ian Adams Street, if I'm correct, is...
That piece of Adams that goes...
To Babcock, right?
I don't know how far. I know, I know it includes Falcone's Building. I know it includes Fire Station. How far up there, I'm not sure it's going.
I thought...
But we're going up there anyway.
We're going up there anyway because of the gas main and the water main. It's all activated to, and it's to your, all of Adam Street to the Quincy Line, am I correct? Ian, the surrounding streets are going to wind up being paved for the new code.
Yeah, I know Adams is based on the work that's going on. I'm more concerned about Granite, making sure it's going all the way up to the next intersection where the state's going to be doing the work over the next year or so. You know, that we, if we're going
to do paving, that we pave it all the way up to that intersection as well.
I agree.
That one's a little different. They're talking from Bassett up to Squanton. That, that part's us.
Right.
Not, not...
That, that would fall outside the scope of this project, but I think we can certainly look at, at timing it so that we can, we can get most of it resurfaced all at the same time.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it only makes sense. It only, I agree. Okay. Any else? Anybody else? Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. And Bill, thank you again on behalf of all of us. Just don't turn your phone off.
Continue to work on that draft with John Flynn.
Yeah. Mr. Ryan and Mr. Costello, I think you've done enough time here tonight. I think you can, I think you have enough to report back to your teacher if you want to call tonight. Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming in. Good luck. You better get an A.
All right. Run for office.
I'm going to jump back to item number nine, which is discussion approval. We all have a copy of a letter regarding the installation of a veteran memorial marker and street sign from Milton resident, United States Marine John Thomas Carata, who was killed in Vietnam while serving his country on September 6th, 1967. And I think most of you have this letter. John Carata grew up, 49 Norman Street in Milton, was killed in Vietnam on September 6th, as I said, 1967. He was a member of the Milton High School class of 60 where he played football. He was a loyal Miltonian and a highly regarded member of his high school class. The attached tribute page lists the awards he earned while in service of the United States Marine Corps. And he's asked that, would we be willing to designate an intersection in his honor, possibly at the corner of Norman Street and Quentin on Norman and Truro Lane, install the appropriate marker? This is a very fitting thing for a man who joined Marine Corps and sacrificed his life in the service of our freedom. So I welcome, do we, did, do you have a location, which one you prefer over the other?
I was going to wait for this board's approval and then talk to Public Works. I don't think either intersection is a problem.
What are the two intersections again, Chief?
Quentin and, Norman and Quentin, or Quentin and Norman, so Norman and Quentin or Truro Lane, or Norman, sorry. Norman and Quentin or Norman and Truro Lane.
Okay. I know where Norman Street is. I know.
Quentin runs through, your neighborhood.
It's on the corner of Frack Road.
Yeah. But not far though from you.
Okay.
It's just in off 138, 280. You want to...
I will add, Chad, that Kevin Cook, our Veteran Services Agent, and Frank Stout from American Legion fully support this idea as well.
I'm sure they do. How about, would I, how about if, would somebody want to make a motion? Would do this pending your coordination with Kevin and Frank to decide which, and also that we coordinate with the family as to a fitting ceremony on the dedication of it. I don't want to just install it. I think we need to have something on his behalf. That be all right? Someone make a good...
Sure thing. Yeah, 100%. I would make a motion that we table this for further discussion. We bring in Kevin Cook and Frank Stout and better define exactly how we would like this to look.
We need to bring them in. We can let them, I think...
We're bringing them into the discussion.
All right, okay.
Rather than table it though, can we make the motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
Okay, all right. Sure thing, sure thing. I move to approve the installation for veteran memorial marker on street sign for Milton resident Marine John Thomas Carata, who was killed September 6th, 1967, while serving in Vietnam at a location to be defined at the preference of the family.
Your friendly amendment, just of the family and the...
Town Administrator.
The Town Administrator.
Yeah, Town Administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion? The only thing I said, maybe we could get this done for Veterans Weekend of November 11. I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can get it done that fast, but maybe that'd be nice if we could. Okay, hearing no further discussion, we all good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, now I'm going to jump down to item 12, which is discussion approval of a Massachusetts Lottery offer letter regarding Keno monitor installation at Milton Food Mart, 133 Brook Road. This is something that a prior board, Ms. Conlon, Mr. Burns, and I dealt with last year, am I right? In 2016, 2016? And that was a 7-Eleven on Randolph Ave?
Both 7-Elevens.
Both 7-Elevens.
Houston Ave and 590 Randolph Ave.
So we have some correspondence attached to this. Maybe I could take a motion and a second, then we can have some discussion. That would be, that be all right? Or do you want to talk about it for, I'll...
Can I just add some background?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, so the town received a letter from Mass State Lottery offering a Keno monitor to the existing Keno-to-go, which is currently offered in Milton, Milton Food Mart. The difference between a Keno monitor and Keno-to-go is the monitor you can sit there and watch and participate in play. Keno-to-go, which is in several stores throughout town, is just as if you were playing tonight's lottery. You play the ticket and you move on. That's it in its simplest terms.
I didn't even know we had that. So who has Keno-to-go? He, obviously, they do.
I think you can play Keno at most lottery locations.
Okay, all right, okay. I know that, okay.
7-Elevens, yeah.
So they want to add like the Keno, I call it the Keno power, the Keno corner, the Keno power.
Correct, yeah.
And if...
That was a similar request to this board back in September of 16 for when both of the Tedeskies, 590 Randolph Ave and Houston Ave became 7-Elevens.
7-Elevens, which we denied. And I, if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong here, Katie, this is a vote we have to take now, correct? Before?
We would have to vote to oppose it, and then Town Council will submit the letter on our behalf.
Within 21 days of the receipt of the letter, correct.
Which is what we did on the other two.
Right.
I like Town Council's letter. It's based on the last letter. The only thing I'd like to maybe ask him to think about adding is in the second paragraph, I think we should talk about the fact that the Milton Food Mart is also located near the Tucker School. It's not far from St. Mary's School.
That's a good point.
And there's a lot of kids that walk to and from Pierce Middle School through that, by, who use that intersection, so they're walking by the food mart. So in addition to it being in a neighborhood that has a lot of children and families, we should probably also ask him to note that there are two elementary schools and it's, and students walking to and from the middle school.
Daily.
Each and every day.
And it's just, it's just a further argument.
I think you could even...
Yes.
So can I make a motion?
Yes, that's great.
So will we oppose the application of the Milton Food Mart located at 133 Brook Road for a Keno monitor installation?
Give a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to go to item 13, which is discussion.
Pardon me.
Oh, did I forget? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Do we, do we need to do one for 590 Randolph Street as well? Did we just do the one for Milton Food Mart?
We already did those. Those are done. We did those a year ago.
Okay.
Those are already done.
All right. Oh, that, I see. That was just an example.
That's an example.
Yeah.
That's an example. We're just trying to copy the letter we did.
Yep, got it.
And your friendly amendment just ended the, because the, the part about the elementary schools didn't really exist on particularly Randolph Ave, so that was...
Great.
Okay.
That's the date.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Okay. So I'm going to go to item 13, as we have all been apprised, our, I call our longtime partner and social worker from Milton Residence Fund, Diane Ferrari, is retiring. And it's been suggested that we create, designate a Diane Ferrari Day, which would be October 27th this year, the end of this month. I'll open it up to any thoughts or discussion, but...
Wonderful idea.
I do too.
Done a lot for the town.
For the town. Is, what day of the week is that?
It's a Friday, I believe.
Do you know how you pick that day? Do you know how they, they came?
Andrew Maloney let me know that Diane would be retiring about that time, and it just seemed a fitting day to, to go out at the end of the week and celebrate her this way.
Okay, so why don't we, want to make a motion? Want to make a motion that we designate October 27th, 2019 as Diane Ferrari Day in the town of Milton?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Who seconded?
I think I made it. Katie seconded.
Okay.
I'm going to do you a favor.
Right, got it. Thank you.
If I'm failing, it's you definitely.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to... Is Bob coming in, item 14?
No, I can speak to this one.
Okay, so I'm looking around going, okay, so I'm going to go to item 14, and I give it to you, Mr. Denny.
Myself, Town Treasurer McCullough, Town Accountant Dexter, and Chief Appraiser Bob Bushway had the pleasure of sitting with Jared Curtis, who's going to be the town's new Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau Accounts Field Representative. He succeeds Martin, I'm going to say his name incorrectly, but Dimuna, who worked with the town for over a decade, processing necessary documents, financial documents for the town. So what, what they are asking for is authority, and this board approved it last year, an authority for the Chief Appraiser to sign Mass, Mass DOR tax recapitulation documents for this board, namely the LA 5 and other documents that come through the town hall on an annual basis. It will be the last year that he will be able to sign on behalf of. Mass General Laws is changing next year, and this board will have to sign each document themselves. We were made aware of in our meeting on, on Monday. But just want to welcome Jared. He's got almost 18 years with, with Mass DOR, and it was time, as he put it, his field, his supervisor decided it was time to switch some communities. He had worked in, on the Cape for many years and on southeastern Mass, and their supervisors decided to change five communities, and Milton ended up being one of them. So we, we welcome Jared, and we, we thank Martin for his service with the town. And then just entertain this motion to allow the Chief Appraiser to sign on behalf of this board.
I move that we authorize our Chief Appraiser to sign Massachusetts Department of Revenue tax recapitulation documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So just a question. So we're delegating our authority to the Chief Appraiser to send that now. So the Chief Appraiser will be acting on his own without, without authority from the Board of Assessors. It's just our designation to him?
Correct.
Okay. And these are mechanical documents?
Mechanical documents, yeah.
Okay.
I'll tell you, one of the most disheartening stories we heard from Jared on Monday in his work on Cape Cod. We struggle as a community with things like free cash, and we welcome 1.9 or 1.3 million dollars. The town of Bonstable, about 15 million dollars in free cash because of their local receipts, the estimates for them, and they have such, you know, obviously it's based on tourism. But some of the stories he was telling about how smaller towns and even towns comparable to Milton, and how life is different in these communities, and we have things that they don't, and they have things that we don't. But it was staggering for me to hear those numbers of free cash that flows through. And it's basically, it's their estimated receipts, and, and they exceed them. They're very conservative in them, and a good summer of tourism for some of these Cape communities, rightly so, is where they're able to, to provide some of the infrastructure and capital work. But it's pretty, pretty interesting stuff. As you just, you know, drive 50, 60 miles south, and it's a completely different world. But yeah, so to, long-winded answer is, yeah, it's just some documents that he will sign on behalf.
Anybody? Anything else? Anybody? So I think I'm going to need a motion.
I think we...
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. So the motion's saying, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. I forgot you asked a question.
No, that's all right.
I'm already jumping ahead. Okay. Item 15, we have four requests, one-day liquor licenses. We have requests from Mary B. Wakefield Estate for Saturday, October 20th, Eustace Estate for Monday, October 22nd, the Boy Scouts of America, which I take it is on a camp sale location?
Correct.
Okay, Camp Sale Equity Road, for Tuesday, October 23rd, and the Milton Club for Wednesday, October 10th.
Is the Milton Club's application here?
I didn't see it.
Uh, yeah, it should be.
Is it?
Yeah. It's the Forbes Museum on Wednesday, October 10th.
Oh, okay.
No, I got three.
I only see three.
This is a reward.
I knew, I knew, I had already asked, so I knew what it was before I...
Yeah, the Pierce PTO is, is scheduled for October 13th, but we can hear that at the 10:10 meeting of this board.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. So on those four dates, can I have a motion to...
Do you want to do it all at one?
Yeah, so do them all at once, or you don't want to?
One omnibus motion, yeah. I'll move to approve one-day liquor licenses, one-day liquor licenses for Mary M.B. Wakefield Estate, Saturday, October 20th, 2018, Eustace Estate, Monday, October 22nd, 2018, Boy Scouts of America, Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, and the Milton Club, Wednesday, October 10th, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 16, boards and committees, reappointment pilot committee members. So we have a motion here to reappoint our Town Administrator Mike Demahie, as well as Matt Keswick, who was a resident from 76 Buckingham Road. And then to add to the pilot committee, Tony Farrington is a representative of the Board of Selectmen, C. Robert Reitz from the Board of Assessors of Assessors, and Jennifer Hine as a resident from 453 Elliott Street. So can I have a motion on that?
I'll move to reappoint Mike Demahie and Matt Keswick as members of the pilot committee, and to appoint Tony Farrington, C. Robert Reitz, and Jennifer Hine as new members of the pilot committee.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We all good? You good? All good? You all good? You good? All good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Dennehy, read the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the, this board. First, I'd like to thank, um, Milton Fire Department Lieutenants, uh, Cicerone and Madden, spent the better half of last week in North Carolina, uh, as a part of the southeast Massachusetts Technical Rescue Team. I haven't been able to debrief with them. They, they did get back yesterday, and they were telling Chief Grant, um, some of their stories and experiences. But, um, uh, their concerted effort to get on there and help the, the victims of Hurricane Florence, um, shouldn't go unnoticed. So, uh, thank you to, to both lieutenants, uh, Cicerone and Madden, for their time, uh, in North Carolina, helping those, uh, in, in need of help, quite clearly, uh, from the pictures we've seen. Celebrate Milton takes place this coming Sunday, twelve to four P.M., Pierce Middle School, rain or shine. I'm not sure, um, what annual one this is, but it's...
It's a lot.
There's been quite a few.
It's a lot.
I wanna say maybe the eighteenth one, but, um, a lot of dedicated work behind the scenes, um, to get this done. But, uh, rain or shine on Sunday up at, uh, Pierce Middle School, uh, from noon to four. Just wanna remind people, a special town meeting will take place, um, or begin on Monday, October twenty-second, at, uh, High School Auditorium. And necess, if necessary, we will continue on the Tuesday and Thursday of that week. Just an update on the electrical vehicle charging station. We had a conversation with, uh, EverSource's representative. As you can imagine, in this day and age, um, electric vehicle charging stations and electric vehicles are becoming popular. Uh, we saw that when, um, the building commissioner attempted to purchase a vehicle, and we had a tough time finding one. We did find it. EverSource has a crew literally dedicated to electrical vehicle charging stations, and they're a bit backed up. So what, what we had hoped to install behind Town Hall, uh, prior to the winter, may get pushed back into April. We're still in coordination with John Hoy from EverSource to see if we can get this expedited and get, um, that vehicle charging station, timed perfectly for the vehicle that's coming our way, so. Great work by Bill Ritchie, as always, trying to get this done, um, finding, uh, a location at Town Hall and, and a transformer that could handle, um, the power that's necessary for that. I talked about Jared Curtis, who came to join us on Monday. Um, I think that's about it for now. Got a note from the Chamber of Commerce, sorry, the Halloween Stroll, as Chase Berkeley had mentioned, is gonna be Saturday, October twenty-seventh, from two to four, at the East Milton Deck. Daryl Elliott and, and all of the members of the Chamber of Commerce down there put on a very good show, so. Saturday, October twenty-seventh, two to four P.M., East Milton Deck.
Will you accost him? That it? You're good?
That's all I have tonight.
Okay. So just a reminder, this Monday, here at the Council on Aging, is a public reception coffee with a cop for Commissioner William Gross, our own resident who's getting a little of a baptism on the fire this weekend. He's had a tough few days, and, uh, I'm very anxious to have him come here. I think it'd be a great thing for our community and for the town. I think it'd be a great day for us, so. That's nine o'clock here on the first. Just a couple items. The Planning Board Chair has notified me that they're ready to submit a name for your Traffic Mitigation Committee? And I, so I've asked for that for the next meeting. Is that all right? I don't know who it is. She did not say it to me, but I've asked her to submit that at the next meeting. Going back to what Katie brought up, Mike's Five K, Five K crush, I s, I created a page, and then I went back and I deleted it because...
Oh, yeah.
You did create one?
I did.
Oh, you did. Oh, you did. So you just, can you just reiterate what the, um, is it Milton Town Hall, or is it?
To your, it's Town, it's just Town Hall.
Just Town Hall. So that it is there. It, it is.
I signed up, but we only have three people signing up.
I'll go do that. So I'll, I won't, I'm, I'm not gonna be here. I'm gonna be away, but I'm gonna donate to it.
I am too, unfortunately, but we need to send an email, another email around Town Hall and try to get more people to sign up.
Can you do that tomorrow?
Sponsor it.
Certainly.
Should do that tomorrow? Okay.
Obviously, it's voluntary, but the more people who can, maybe some of the other elected boards and other people who could join us.
For those of you who were here the other night for the Master Planner Implementation Committee, I just wanna say thank you to Katie and with time. It's, uh, you've done a ton of work there, and it's... One thing I guess I could say I've learned here is change is not easy, and MAPC, everyone presented a ton of good info the other night, and it's really a chance to shape our future going forward. And as I said, um, when I did speak, uh, if a developer were to come in today and propose to put a gas station where the citizens' drive-through is, the people probably come out of the woodwork and go crazy. But for all my childhood, that's what that was. It was a gas station. And then it closed, and citizens bought it, and it became a drive-through, and that's what it's been. But, um, I really just, your entire committee, they've done a lot of hard work, and, and I really, I'm not only appreciative of, I'm very impressed with everything they've done there. And I, I do think, I, I did mention to Michael today, to, uh, we're gonna have like a preliminary meeting with Boston, just to kind of discuss some of the regional money from Seaport Council, some of the money that's available out there that we might be able to pursue. As, as, um, Laurie Stillman said when she talked tonight, and having had that role in the police department, I mean, is chasing grants is a tough thing, but you can have some great rewards for it, and there is some significant money there, which really could maybe help all of us here and that, so. And then the last thing, just last night, I was at the fire station building committee, and associated with that, Michael and I attended a neighborhood meeting dur, on the same night as, and at last, at our last meeting, I had suggested to Dr. Donahue, and I did suggest to the fire station building committee, that if, if they're looking at the possibility of actual, a real donation happening in a, a new fire headquarters, being built into potentially part of this property, that maybe the schools could, I just don't think that's a point or anything now, looking at the reality. But the reality, so the, the part that I wanna bring up about this tonight is, it appears from all of their work that the reality of this donation is more likely than it's not. And if that were to happen for a brand-new fire station, I think of two things that, one, Katie brought up, and the other comes from the Master Plan Implementation Committee's recommendations. And also for the neighbors is that if a new station were to be approved and built and touch on a piece of that land, that we should look at the, two, two aspects. We should try and look at taking the recommendations of the Master Plan Implementation Committee of using it for some type of communal. And I've, I've actually been riding around looking. Randolph has one. I went to Marshfields today. Something that could really enhance this neighborhood and enhance the center of our community, um, as well as giving us a brand-new fire station. But the third thing, and this goes back, Katie, to just something simply that we talked about when we went to the five-person board, is space needs. That if that happened, that we should really start to look at, if the old fire station became available, what we, we could use it for to enhance, you know, our own town government infrastructure. I mean, we're in this building here because there's no room for us to meet in our own building.
Right.
I've talked about Hingham, and last night I was talking to a representative on the MPAG Committee in Winchester, and he was telling how they've done some space needs with MPAG money in Winchester to create individual boardrooms for the planning board conservation, just, so maybe, the more that I see the reality, but I think, I think maybe we really need to look at like, maybe, um, almost like a visionary type of spacey. I know we have a million committees, but I think we start to need to think, you know, look at it. Cause I, the more that I go to the fire station building committee, and the more I listen to them and see the approach they're taking, and even when we, when, uh, we presented this to the neighbors, why new versus construction, you know, a rehab, I think they understood it and got it, that, you know, most communities are building, when they have the opportunity, are building a new headquarters, and this is a, a chance not for us to just get a brand-new fire headquarters. It's a chance to do it, taking around ten million dollars off of our capital, which could free that up for something really needed in this community. So I just think we need to keep, we've got a lot of momentum going here. Hendrix is, is on its way. The Deck of Town's just moving operations. I think that we need to like, and I, I'm very appreciative of all the work that the, the Fire Station Building Committee's doing. And I think that's all I have for tonight. That's enough.
Very quickly, um, Milton Library Foundation Literary Gala, October seventeenth, Granite Links Golf Club. Great food, great fun. The theme is, is going to be football. We'll have Chris Keating, who's a former NFL player who lives here in Milton. We'll have Upton Bell, who's gonna be telling stories, um, of, of the NFL when he was there, and others, other stories as well. He'll be our primary author. Um, we're going to be honoring the, those who, um, were responsible for the revitalization of the library ten years ago. And as a tease, uh, you will see Will Adamsek, our library director, and perhaps others, as you have never seen them before. So come to the Milton Library Foundation Gala on October seventeenth, WMLFLiteraryGala.org. Second, uh, on the Traffic Mitigation Committee, we need residents. We need two residents for that committee. And so we're gonna start, um, seeking some resident volunteers who have interest and/or expertise in taking a holistic view of, um, how to improve traffic. And that could include, uh, software. It could include, uh, some other experience. So if you have an interest, or if you have expertise, sign up and, uh, and, uh, so we can get that committee populated and, and often run.
Mrs. Collins?
Actually, uh, on Monday, I went to the Municipal Partners Conference. The governor spoke, Lieutenant Governor, and, uh, several of our secretaries. And then, uh, Ms. Conlon and I actually saw Secretary Ash, that was my second time that week, um, at the MMA Regional Meeting, and I found it really informative. He is willing to come out to any community and take a tour, and, uh, talk about ideas that, that he sees, and, um, and also hook you up with the, the, the right people to, to talk to and, and help with resources. So I, I found it, um, really informative. There were, um, sessions on, um, climate and disaster mitigation and preparedness, housing, and, and a few other topics that I, I think are timely and, and every community is really struggling with. So I have material from those, and I can, um, hand them off to Jen, and she can get them around to everyone.
Okay. Anything else I could?
No.
See, told you. Thank you. Kate?
I have no report.
Tony?
I do not. Um, a couple of future agenda items.
Okay, so we have no citizen speaks. We have no citizen speak response, future agenda items. Just a couple of things here that I have, um, we're gonna need to reappoint Chase Berkeley, the LAPC, cause his term ends in June. We need to update him. I think we need to bring the animal shelter people in because they've just gotten their approval from ConCon. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, uh, getting close here, which is a good thing. I believe Steve O'Donnell wants to come in and report back to us on the building and, and potential grant work. He spoke to us before about it. At some point, if you wanna come back in with the Comcast negotiations update, just, just, it's healthy. You're not, you don't have to tell me now, but just...
We will, because it's, because it's, uh, the, the contract is up, uh, next month, so we will be, I'm sure we'll be... We have invited them here for the tenth.
Okay. And then the last thing, that National Grid Lockout Update Discussion, that timeline is, and we are going to, it's gonna get cold. I mean, just look at the dilemma. I don't think anyone could have, even though it has nothing to do with this, I don't think anyone could have projected what was gonna take place in Andover, North Andover, Lawrence. But just look at the, the difficulties and the hardship it's placing with heat and electricity and things of that nature. There're going to be people in this town. The gas service is going to affect them. So I think, um, I think I'd like to hear an update from them, and I think we need to have a revisit this. Because I think, um, just having some discussions with Chase, there are gonna be issues he's gonna have to come to us with that he thinks need to be addressed, and I think we have to listen to him, so. I think I'm gonna maybe try and get that on for the tenth, get someone in here for the tenth. That's all right?
Like Jim Young or Joe?
Yeah, that's fine, whatever, anyone, whoever. Is that all right? Is that all right with you? Okay. And, uh, that's it? Will adjourn and go into a Governor Stoughton meeting? Go ahead. Do you want one more thing? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, do you have a couple?
Well, I have three things. Two of them you already addressed, Richard. The third one was, I know we talked about this, but maybe a retreat.
Yeah, so I did, I just, I'm just waiting. I was thinking of Columbus Weekend. If that, if, why don't I say this right now? If anyone could look at nine to one on that Saturday of Columbus Weekend, only because I know school's gonna be out, and everyone's, if that does work, if you could let Jen know quickly.
Come on this weekend?
Yeah. No, you think, no. All right, all right, all right, hold on. All right, hold on. Oh, you're going somewhere?
Maybe.
I'm kidding. All right. Let's, let's, um, okay, so Columbus is what weekend?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yeah, that's too quick. Okay. So the thirteenth, how's the thirteenth look? The twentieth is out, cause there's a lot of things on the twentieth. Either the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh, would either one of those work, nine to one in the morning?
Maybe we could just email the...
Yeah, email the dates, yeah. Email it to Jen, and then I'll, I'll make the, I'll make it happen.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then also, anything you wanna, without, it's only four hours, but anything you wanna get on there?
Okay.
Is that all right?
I might, I might offer up, uh, an abbreviated session.
Less than nine to one?
Yeah, maybe like two to three hours.
Okay.
Can I add two future agenda items?
Sure.
Selectmen Farrington's done?
Yeah.
Uh, MPAG?
I had that, yeah, I did have that, okay.
Yeah. And, uh,
I did, I missed that.
Been approached by a resident who has an idea about an arts and culture director in town?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we could talk about that.
Bring her in. Okay.
And I'm not sure if this is really a future agenda item, but I, I think we should talk about, with all the transition on the warrant committee and the transition in our own office, I think we should try to get a little working group together to kind of map out what are better processes for getting the warrants together, making sure that, that we're doing what we need to do on our end, the warrant committees are what they need to do. And I think even the planning board, we need to look at their schedule of public hearings and when their articles are ready to go. So if we could get a little working group together, and I don't know if it's something we'd have to formally appoint, or if we could do it more informally. If we have to formally appoint it, it would need to be on a future agenda. Hopefully, a very short term, just a couple of meetings.
Why don't you give it some thought, and then if you think informal, we'll go informal. If you think formal, I'll get it on the agenda. How's that?
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
Sure. If anyone else has any ideas on it, just let the Town Administrator know.
I'd love to be on it.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think you, I think we need you, Mike.
Anything else? Anybody? Any, is there anything else? Go ahead.
Just one thing. If that, if that, um, anonymous donation on the, uh, the fire station is becoming, um, more solidified, more of a reality, we might wanna have that on the agenda. We might wanna have John Flynn here, because it's, maybe, maybe it's premature, but at some point...
He's already met with, they're already meeting with you.
I think, I think we need to determine, you know, uh, if there's an anonymous, anonymous donation, but there are strings attached. Seems to me there would be some issues there, so it's something I think we, we might wanna discuss.
So their chair, Brian Walsh, asked me, um, what, two weeks ago, about, at least three weeks ago, for permission to have the discussion with John Flynn about this? And they already had their first meeting. Just talking about, cause this, if you, if you recall, um, in the schools, there was a significant, and they did the same thing, so. But I, we're a ways away. I mean, you're a ways, I think you're, you're a ways away from having, but I, I said yes, based on, I think you're better off to get as many unknowns and get, for us, as much answers as you can, so that there's not a lot of...
Yeah, so if we can talk about that as well, that'd be great.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? Motion adjourned? We'll go to Governor Stoughton?
So moved.
Okay. So I'm gonna call the order. A meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton. First, we have approval of meeting minutes, which, which meeting we have? Is there a specific meeting there?
September twelfth.
So could I have a motion to approve the meetings of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, which took place, um, here on September twelfth of twenty eighteen? Want to review them? Anyone, is, you have, oh, you already have them. Okay. Motion approved? Anyone? Are we all right? Are you reviewing? Katie's not looking at me.
No, I'm...
Are you okay?
I, I, yeah, I mean, if someone wants to make the motion first, I, I just wanna suggest that maybe we shorten that, some of our minutes, because they're, I think they're getting longer again. We were, they were getting longer for a while ago. We were trying to get them shortened. It used to be that, they used to be very short. It, it, they didn't really, like, it, it would just be following discussion, the board vote, and such and such. Or, um, these are, these have a lot of detail about what comments are made by specific people, and I know some minutes are done that way, but in the past, the boys' minutes have been shorter, and you can argue it either way, whether you want shorter or longer minutes. I tend to personally think shorter minutes are better, but, um, but I, you know, I wanna see what everyone else thinks.
I agree with that. I mean, I, I, you know, to the extent that you can...
Concise and direct.
Yeah, and just say that it's a, generally describe the discussion. Um, I think that's, uh, you know, I, I, I prefer that, just a general description of this discussion. These are fine. These are great.
These are great. I'm happy to vote these, but, but, but I think that's, that's my preference. And plus, you know, we do have the, we do have the, these days, we do have the video and the audiotape, so, the videotape, so. But anyway, so that's, that's, I agree with that.
Yeah, it just cuts down to on the time required for, you know, for Jen to be, after the Melinda, or whoever to be reviewing them. And Melinda's the secretary, so I know she's spending a lot of time on it now.
Yeah, reviewing them. So, do you want to?
Vote these?
Do, do you want to vote, vote these or do you want the redone?
I'll move approval of the minutes, the minutes of the Governor Stoughton trustees meeting from September 12th, 2018, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item three, approval. We have approval to renew support in the amount of $15,000 to Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Hospital. I believe this is an annual, it's been a couple, this is not our first, we've done this in the past. They request that the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund consider renewing support by authorizing the funding of $15,000 to defray the cost of providing this care to residents for the fiscal year, October 1st, 2016, September 20, 2017. B I D Milton provided unreimbursed care to these residents, the total in the amount of $178,202. That's just a brief of what they've done. So if I'm ready, if someone wants to make a motion, whenever they're ready.
I'll move to approve funding in the amount of $15,000 to Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital to defray the cost of providing care to residents.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. The second one is a request to the Town Administrator from Susan Swanson, the Activities Coordinator of Uncordy House in Milton. And this is, again, another, a renewal, I don't want to, I don't want to quote, this is, we've given, we gave a grant of $5,000 last July, supporting nutrition programs here on Uncordy Houses. Because most people don't, many people don't know that there are many residents there who are in a very difficult position. They depend on things like Meals on Wheels, just to eat every day, the food pantry and other community resources for their daily nutrition. So I believe, last year, the Governor Stought grant funds supplemented the actual cost by $120 a week. The actual amount occurred for that year was $5,760. Am I seeing something here that, what is the amount they're asking for? Is it exactly?
It's a.
Is it 5,000 even?
5,000.
5,000 even, okay.
And if I might add, Mr. Chairman, this letter was submitted.
Yes, in June.
To me and this board in June and it fell through the cracks. So I completely apologize to Ms. Swanson and those at the Uncordy House.
So we will attempt to rectify that right now. So if someone's ready?
I'll move that we approve a request from Uncordy House for $5,000 for.
Food stuff.
Just dining programs and meals programs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to adjourn?
So will.
Second.
Thank you all very much. Get your pens out.